Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Chairman Najad is absent. Commissioner Beatty is absent. Commissioner Jabar-
Present.
Commissioner Javi-
Here.
Commissioner Linton-
Here.
Commissioner Macon-
Here.
Commissioner Noriola-
Here.
Commissioner Pate is absent. Commissioner Karishi-
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, everyone was sent the minutes of the meeting. Is there any discussion or correction? Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for approval.
Got a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion's approved. The minutes are approved. Okay, file PZ 2022-489.
Good afternoon. Randall Creel of South Tech Surveyors has requested approval of the replat of lots eight through eleven, block thirty-three Arlington addition into tract eight A addition Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The property is located at eight ten Madison Avenue. The purpose of the replat is to combine all the lots into one large tract. Combining the lots will give the property owner the right to place an accessory structure wherever they would like, subject to setback requirements and easements. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following condition. Number one, no structure or appurtenances shall be placed within the easement property. The city will not be responsible for any surface restoration when sewer repairs or taps are necessary within the city of Beaumont utility easement. Notices were mailed to fifty property owners. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. This is the aerial photography of the site. And this is the replat. I do believe we have the applicant here.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? Okay, and the applicants in the audience?
South.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Faust. I'm standing in for Randall Creel this afternoon. My office is at fifty-five fifty East Tex Freeway, Suite O, in the wonderful city of Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to add to the staff marvelous presentation, so if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer.
Okay, are there any questions to Mr. Faust?
How many lots in total?
I'm sorry?
How many lots in total over there?
We're taking four lots and combining them to one. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Faust.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or against? None heard, so the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion or discussion?
Motion to approve with one condition.
There is two conditions. One. There was two conditions, I guess.
I thought it's one.
You said that. Motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Thank you, that carries. Thank you. File PZ 2022-510.
Aaron Ward of Faust Engineering requests approval of the preliminary plat of Faith Estates, Section One. This development is located south of Plant Road and west of Helbig, and will have thirty-three lots within the residential subdivision. Water and sewer will be provided by extension of city utilities. This plat was reviewed by Planning Commission previously on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It was approved with conditions at that time. However, the approval of the plat and the- between the time the approval of the plat- approval of the plat and time construction drawings were received, revisions had been made by Faust Engineering. Those changes included the width of the right-of-way for Favor Street to be reduced from sixty feet to fifty feet, and the removal of lot one, block one of the Woodlands Meadows, Section One, from the platted area. With such changes made, the plat must be reviewed again by Planning Commission. As Grace Lane and Peace Street will extend less than two hundred feet beyond Favor Street, a temporary cul-de-sac waiver has been requested by Faust Engineering as permitted to do so by Section twenty-six point zero-three point zero-zero-two, Part Eight, Subpart B. Additionally, the preliminary master plan shows such streets to be extended to connect with Section Two of Faith Estates subdivision in the future. Mr. Ward proposed Favor Street to have a fifty-foot right-of-way and pavement width of thirty-eight feet to be reduced to twenty-eight feet from Plant Road to Peace Street. As such, they request a waiver to the minor collector street requirement for said portion of Favor Street. Section twenty-six point zero-three point zero-zero-two, Part Four, states a street serving more than sixty-four but less than four hundred and fifty dwelling units shall be a minor collector street with a right-of-way of no less than sixty feet and a thirty-six foot face to- face of curb to face of curb. Planning staff recommends approval of the waivers and approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall submit to engineering a revised master plan and master drainage plan. Number two, all abbreviations, reserves, easements, and relative information must be defined on the plat, adhering to center point energy requirements. We do have the applicants present. This is the site. This is the master plan. And then this is Section One. So to- my mouse over there. They're wanting to reduce this from sixty feet to fifty feet in right-of-way, and then the pavement width from thirty-eight to twenty-eight from here to here. And the applicant is present.
Okay, are there any questions of staff?
Why they are reducing the width? What is the reason for that?
Why they're coming back to you guys? So before, they had this area platted within the original preliminary plat that was reviewed on the nineteenth of- or sorry, September of two thousand twenty-two. And then they also had this area to be sixty feet with a thirty-eight feet- or thirty-eight-foot pavement in that same meeting. So now they want to remove this platted area and then reduce this to fifty feet right-of-way with twenty-eight feet of pavement width.
Okay.
Okay, is the applicant in the audience? Mr. Faust, come on back.
Good afternoon. Yes, what happened was on the access road on the right-hand side of the subdivision, that was originally platted when subdivision two our north was created, and that was a fifty-foot right-of-way. We have individual ownership on either side, so we're limited to a fifty-foot wide right-of-way at that point.
Okay, are there any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, it's now open for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Yes, sir, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
Carlton Sharp, fifty-one fifty Plant Road. I'm here to speak in favor of this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve with the two conditions.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with the two conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, five-one-two is approved. Thank you. You seconded it, right? Okay, we're on to PZ 2022-513.
Yes. Faust Engineering is requesting a preliminary plat approval for Springwood, Section Four. The project is located within the city of Beaumont at the northwest end of Alexis Street, northwest of RFD Road. The development is comprised of sixteen residential lots. Rachel Lane will have a fifty-foot right-of-way and a twenty-eight-foot wide pavement. The extension of Alexis, a minor collector, will have a sixty-foot right-of-way with thirty-eight feet in pavement width. Utilities will be provided by extension of the city of Beaumont water and sewer. This item was originally worded with having to reroute water lines along with- along Rachel and Alexis Street to be placed on the same side of the roadway and to not cross over. However, Faust Engineering submitted a corrected preliminary plat to address these needs. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the request with no conditions, as the previous conditions are no longer necessary. This is the site. This is the master plan. And then this is Section Four, and we do have the applicant present.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant in the audience? One more time.
Thank you. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of Mr. Faust? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition? None heard. Public hearing is now closed. Do we have a discussion or a motion?
A motion to approve with the one condition?
No conditions. Just one condition.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with the one condition. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have just a little bit of a wait to wait for the joint meeting with- nope, with the city council.
You have a quorum.
We've got a quorum, there you are.
But if you just wanna wait until three fifteen because that's what the posted time is?
I know.
Then, yeah.
We've gone earlier before and-
Yeah, so let's just wait until the posted time, but you do have a quorum.
Okay, it's officially three fifteen.
Mayor?
Mayor Muton?
Present.
Mayor Potem Duryo?
Present.
Councilmember Philshaw?
Present.
Councilmember Turner? Councilmember Neeld? Councilmember Getz?
Present.
Councilmember Samuel?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon and thank you for coming. This is a joint meeting with quorums from both the Beaumont City Council and the Planning Commission. Today will be your only opportunity to hear agenda items that are presented today. After today, the Planning Commission will send the items to Beaumont City Council within two to three weeks for a decision. There will not be an additional public hearing on any of these agenda items. Beaumont City Council will meet at a public hearing to make a decision. And if you don't ask any questions today, you won't have the opportunity to do it at the next city council meeting. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, we're gonna start with file PZ 2021-321.
For many years, eleven oh nine Harriet Street was the location of Eagle Auto Services, a service station. That business no longer appeared in the city directory after two thousand ten. Since that time, the property has not been occupied consistently and is now zoned neighborhood commercial, requiring an SUP for an automotive shop. Complaints were received due to vehicles parked on the right-of-way, blocking the view of traffic for the intersection of Harriet Street and Park Streets. The property was found to be in violation as no certificate of occupancy was on file for the use neither the current auto shop nor the- nor an approved specific use permit. In October of two thousand twenty-one, city council approved an SUP to allow an automotive shop at eleven oh nine Harriet Street, subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum of eleven vehicles to be on the property at any given time, including- maximum of eleven vehicles to be on the property at any given time, including customer and employee parking. Number two, all auto repair must be conducted inside the shop. Since the approval of the SUP, the property has remained in violation of both conditions for every inspection. Code enforcement filed charges for excess number of vehicles and no certificate of occupancy. In February of two thousand twenty-two, the business owner was placed on a ninety-day probation for excessive vehicles. In May, both items were brought before the judge, at which time the property owner was fined, but violations have continued since. Section twenty-eight point zero-four point zero-zero-one, Part H of the zoning ordinance states a specific use permit may be revoked or modified after notice and hearing for either of the following reasons. One, the specific use permit was obtained or extended by fraud or deception. Two, that one or more of the conditions imposed by the permit has not been met or has been violated. Planning staff recommends revocation of the specific use permit based on the fact that the property has remained in violation after multiple warnings by mail, telephone, and in person. Notices were mailed to twenty-one property owners. We received zero in favor and two in opposition stating, one of them stating that property was sold. And then we just got one in before the meeting. The other stating in opposition, I live directly across the street where cars are being brought to this place. Wreckers come across my yard and put it all over. Also, this is a junkyard, not a mechanic shop. The rest of the message is, I can't read it. It's not legible. But that's pretty much the gist of it. I do believe that the owners of the auto shop are here, present for you guys.
Okay, a question. It says that the property owners were fined for the violations. Did they pay the fines?
I'm unsure. I do have Ms. Lewis here, who is our zoning officer, and the applicants are here. So they could- well, not the applicants, I'm sorry, the owners who were charged- filed charges on are here.
Okay.
Real quick, this is the site. This was the submitted site plan. On December two thousand twenty-twenty-one, these were the pictures that were taken. And then in February two thousand twenty-two, these were the pictures that were taken for the second inspection. Third inspection happening May of two thousand twenty-two. And fourth inspection happening in June of two thousand twenty-two. And then fifth inspection, September of two thousand twenty-two. And we do have the owners here.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Is the owner and the occupant of this property the same?
Yes, I believe so.
So clarification, did you say, yes, they live there also?
Occupant?
Oh, no, no.
Are they also the proprietors of the business?
Oh, okay.
One moment. So I was under the impression that the owner and the occupant were the same. I did hear a no from the- from the owners, from the owners. But the applicants, I believe, are- or I'm sorry, the owners of the business are here as well.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
What are all the violations they have?
So at first, it was they were operating without a CO or a certificate of occupancy. And then they received an SUP in September two thousand twenty-one. And since then, with those two conditions, they've been in violation. They did apply for their certificate of occupancy but have not completed it. So they're still in violation of the CO, and also they're not adhering to the conditions that were set forth by you guys and city council for the business to be there.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. Okay, we're gonna ask that you keep your comments two, three minutes, so everyone has an opportunity to talk. Is the occupant in the audience? If so, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
My name is Victor Olivares. The address is eleven oh nine Harriet.
I'm sorry, eleven oh nine?
Eleven oh nine Harriet.
Okay, can you come up a little bit closer? We can hear you.
Do you want to know the address of the shop or this house?
His residence.
It's thirty-six eighty-five Blossom Drive.
Okay. And are you the owner?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to visit with us about-
He's been calling his clients to come and pick up his cars, 'cause sometimes they just leave them there. I'm sorry, sometimes they'll just leave them there, and they won't come pick them up, they won't come pay for them. But he's been coming- he's been calling them to try to get them out of there. To try to- 'cause that's one of the violations, that he has too many cars. So he's been trying to get all of them out that have been there for a long time.
Okay.
Is- what is the reason they're not- are they paid you guys already for the repairs?
No, they haven't. That's one of the reasons why they're still there, because they don't have the money to go pick it up, or because they just don't- 'cause sometimes they'll just go and they'll check it, and they'll just leave it there. Like if the wreck will come bring it, and they don't have the money.
Do you have any policy that how long they can leave there?
Well, we'll call- we do, but we call them and they just don't pick it up. And then when- once they don't, he's been calling like a wreck service to take them. But he doesn't like to do that, 'cause he just doesn't feel like it's right. So he just waits for them to come pick them up.
How- how long have you owned the business?
About eight years.
Eight years.
But you got to understand, leaving all the vehicles there more than you are allowed is an eyesore for the neighborhood, and it's a problem, isn't a violation.
Yeah, he's trying to not get any more cars in anymore till he gets all of them out. He hasn't been getting any more in. So he can get the ones that he has right now out.
Okay, so what are you guys doing for the CO process? Like, why have you guys not completed? I think, believe you guys had ninety days to do it.
I'm not sure. I- my- I asked my mom, she said she had it already, but I'm not sure, 'cause she's the one that's been doing that. But we- if- if I need to talk to her, we'd like to see what we need to do. 'Cause she- I- she thinks that she has it. She told me that she had it. So I'm not sure. Maybe she- she misses the test or something.
Okay, so because she's interpreting, and you asked that question, you are obligated to translate that to him and allow him to answer, because he is the owner of the business.
Oh, well, no, no, no.
What is the certificate called? Certificate of Operation?
Occupancy.
Okay. Yeah, he said the same. The one that knows is my mom. She's the one that takes care of the people with. But we asked her, whenever I was reading it, I asked her, and she told me that she had it already.
That she had it but had not completed it? Is that what you're saying?
I'm guessing. She told me that she had it already, and that she- she thought it was completed, I guess.
So, you know, you have to turn all that into them, right? Okay. All right, are there any other questions?
Yes. Stating that this has been over a year, and you've already been to court also. And so I'm trying to find out, in that year process, what was the miscommunication between you and the city in the permit?
What was the- that no- why didn't you get the permission? He said because of all the inspections that they had to keep doing to approve it. To approve the permit. He said that they passed it, and he's just waiting for them to come in and the permit.
Sorry, say again?
Yeah, would you speak up, please?
Speak in the mic.
He said he's just, that they passed all the permits already, and he's just waiting to get it, the paper. But it was taking a while, 'cause they wouldn't- it wouldn't pass. Like whenever they would go and inspect, they wouldn't pass.
Okay. But you're aware that they received warnings by mail, by phone, and in person, correct? Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Yes, sir, can we get your name and address, please?
My name is Victor Cantu. Forty-six twenty-five Prairie Street, Beaumont, Texas, triple seven oh seven. I'm gonna speak on behalf of my mom. Her name's Dolores Cantu. Same address. She is the owner of the property. She's the one that's written out to the folks that just came up here. So prior to that, y'all heard that, you know, she ran the business when my dad was not with us, you know, successfully for probably over fifteen years. She's just the one that's handling the business, I mean, the property and all that, trying to get renters or whatever. She ended up renting to the people that came up here. But I guess apparently, you know, all these issues came up and all that, so she wasn't aware of it. Maybe she's- she should have her email on file with code, but I'm not sure if they've been in communication. But also with the language barrier, maybe that's why. I was hearing the renter say that, you know, it was miscommunication, and maybe they couldn't, you know, talk to the people, you know, somebody doesn't speak Spanish upstairs. So maybe that's one of the issues. But for my mom, she's- whatever y'all decide, you know, moving forward, whether y'all revoke it or not, she wants to make sure that, you know, hopefully for future tenants or renter, wouldn't, you know, affect her getting the SUP and the CO. You know, whatever y'all decide, but she's just- she's worried that she's gonna- she doesn't wanna lose the property as, you know, for income, because that's her source of income. So she doesn't wanna lose that. And I just, you know, found out about this, you know, she told me she, you know, moms wanna do everything on their own and stuff. But I just got, you know, word of it, so I'm trying to, you know, figure out what's all going on. So, like you said, whatever y'all decide is- is- we just don't- she doesn't want it to affect, you know, future.
Understand. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm sorry, you have- can you come back, Mr. Cantu? I'm sorry, we had a question. I apologize.
The, in that process, you said that there was a breakdown in communication?
Yes, so from what I've heard, whenever the renters was up here saying that, you know, that year, maybe they weren't, I guess, they came up here, they didn't understand, maybe they didn't understand something different, is from what I got. I don't, I don't know, that's.
I was just curious, do, do we have anybody that speaks Spanish where they couldn't get this communication?
No, we have staff that would be able to translate.
Were they available for them?
They should have been. We have two, so normally if one's not there, then the other is. But if either of them were not there at any given time, then we would seek someone out to translate.
So, you're saying that it was properly trans, communicated to them?
It should have been.
Now, I will say that I did come up, come up here myself, and I spoke to, I guess, Ms. Josie or Ms. Adina. And she told me herself that they have had to go to court, and they were fined, but, I mean, that's all the information she could give me. I don't know, you know, from that, and this is like, I don't know, two months ago or something.
How long have they been renting from you?
Uh...
How long have they been your tenant?
Uh, probably about, about eight years.
Eight years.
Yeah. But before that, we used to have the mechanic, Sammy and my husband, for about close to twenty years, and we never had any problem. Never, never had any problem with the city. So, until I rented.
And Ms. Cantu, can we get your name and address, please, ma'am?
Doris Cantu, forty-six twenty-five Prairie Avenue, Beaumont Texas, seven 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 oh seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
I do have one question. Do you know if the fine was paid?
No, sir. I know they, they got a fine, the lady had a fine. She been paying maybe, so, I don't know. I really don't know about the fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or opposition? No? Okay, there were some additional questions for the owner. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cantu.
I want to put on favor. Miss place my paper that is sent, you know, to.
You can just give that to her. Okay, actually, the public hearing is now closed.
So, you get a chance for them to respond if they, if they want to?
So, we can let you respond. Okay, if you'll come back up, please?
It's still open.
Still, public hearing is still open?
The fine was paid that, that they had.
Okay, and you've been renting the property, sir, from Ms. Cantu, for eight years?
Yes.
Okay? Any questions? Yes, sir.
I just want to say I receive a lot. I'm a, what for councilman, and that's in my area. And I receive a lot of complaints about all vehicles. Every time I pass by there, every time I pass by there, there's at least twenty, twenty-five vehicles there, every time, in different states of, of repair. And they're working on the outside, they're supposed to work on the inside, and we gave, giving them more than one chance. I mean, a lot. Still got quite a lot to come and eat more.
Okay. Thank you, councilman. Sir, anyone else who has any questions? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Motion to deny permit.
Revoke.
Revoke permit.
Okay, we have a motion to revoke the specific use permit. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the, I'm sorry, to revoke the specific use permit, and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, file PZ two thousand twenty-two dash five one ZURO.
Derek Legge, on behalf of New Faith Holiness Church, requests a specific use permit to expand the church located at fifty-two fifty Helbig Road. The GCMD dash two zoning district requires an SUP for all proposed land uses. Mr. Legge intends to install a pre-manufactured building for a fellowship hall and increase the size of the parking lot. Section twenty-eight point zero four point zero zero six states an increase in the size of an existing parking lot by twenty-five percent, and the number of parking spaces or more shall require the entire parking lot in addition to the twenty-five percent expansion to be brought into compliance with this section. The hours of operation will be Wednesdays from six-thirty AM to nine PM, Thursdays from nine AM to two PM, and Sundays from ten-thirty AM to two PM. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plant, plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sanit, sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. Number two, construction plans shall be in compliance with section twenty-eight point zero four point zero zero six landscaping and screening requirements. Number three, construction plans must meet all building code requirements. Notices were sent to thirty-one property owners. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. This is the site. This is an aerial photography showing the site's turing. This is the site plan. And I went ahead and zoomed in so you guys could see what's going on. So, over here is going to be the proposed building, and then this is the additional parking area that they're going to install or construct. This is the subject property. This is properties to the north, to the west and southwest, and the east and southeast. And we do have the applicants present.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Thank you. Is the applicant in the audience? Yes, sir. If you'll give us your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. Derek Legge, property remodeling and construction, thirty-one eighty Guthrie Road, Suite A, Beaumont, Texas. Everything mentioned is correct. I do want to add that conditions number seven, adding the additional landscaping on the front of the existing concrete, we did add that in, and I do have it on the civil drawing.
There's only three conditions.
I'm sorry? The landscaping?
We only had three listed.
Oh, okay. I've got.
Oh, next page. Sorry.
Number two, the landscaping section requirements, sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, we did add it to the civil drawings on the site plan to add the additional bushing on the front of Helbig in between the concrete and the, the property.
Okay, are there any questions of the applicant? No? Thank you, sir. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Yes, sir. We could get your name and address, please.
My name is Philip Paulus. My address is ninety-two eighty-five Rick Street in Beaumont, Texas, and I'm a favorite for it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor or opposition? None heard. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Madam Mayor, I think we're through. Thank you.